Yeah.
Good.
I'd like to call the Rio Del City Council meeting to order Tuesday, October 15th, 2019. Roll call.
Mayor Garms, Mayor Proton Woodall.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Stran.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Next on the agenda is public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item come up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Any public comments?
Mayor Proton Woodall, council. Nick Angelo, 1-56 Grayland Heights Road. I just sort of discussed the chamber, but we've got on staff now or contracted out a marketing person, Andrea Jorgensen, App Imprints, I think is her company name. For the last month, she's been trying, reaching out and increasing membership and is endeavoring to market for the town as well as gather donations, et cetera, bring people into the fold on a larger scale than we have. If she is successful, she will self-fund herself and continue on. She has about one more month to do so. She's doing okay, so we'll see how this works out. The, what was it, the trunk and treat coming up? I can't remember what day it is. It's, I believe, on Halloween at around four o'clock. That's with the Community Resource Center. Chamber will be there as well, but don't forget to come around about, I think it's 5:30 or 6:00. And all the kids get a trunk or treat over there at the Fire Hall Department. So, not the best name if you ask me, but it works and they like it, they appreciate it. So, as we get closer to Christmas, we're going to be doing the Dennis Went memorial tree lighting, or not memorial, but Dennis Went tree lighting ceremony. It's always the first Saturday of December. And the weekend of Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving, we put all the decorations out. So, that's our schedule so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No.
No? Okay, next item is the consent calendar. On tonight's consent calendar, we have approval minutes of the October 1st, 2019 regular meeting. Two, authorize the city manager to execute agreement for code enforcement administration services. Three, authorize the chief of police to execute agreement with the county of Humboldt for $33,488 in Measure G revenue. And four, receive and file the check register for September. Anybody like to pull anything?
I'd like to pull number two, please.
Okay. Anybody in the audience like to pull anything? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve item one, three, and four?
Someone?
A second.
Okay, I call for the vote. No, Garms. You got it, Sue. Passes three, zero. Okay.
Sue?
Item number...
So, I don't, you know, I missed a couple of months, so I'm not, I mean, a couple of meetings, so I'm not sure that the, has this been looked at? I was just sort of looking at page 13, the actual agreement. The first paragraph says that it's being signed at Eureka, is that true? And then, when we go down and actually look at these days, 15 days, 30 days, are those enough days to satisfy, you know, something really does come up? It seems like those are really tying the city's hands to short amount of days.
So, this was reviewed by the city attorney to match the, what's in the city's ordinances. So, in terms of specifics on the responses to the days, unfortunately, the chief of police is not here at the moment, but the city attorney and the chief of police reviewed it and recommended it be moved forward to the council.
So, do you know, was this something that the nuisance committee looked at, or did this go through committee somewhere?
Yeah, so the council, a part of the priority setting for this year, the top number one priority for the council was code enforcement. And so, in looking at the structure of how code enforcement had been set up, we were recommending that some changes be made. So, it basically established a nuisance advisory committee.
Right.
Before, there had been a nuisance hearing committee, which was the adjudicating body for complaints, bearing in mind, there has not been a need for that function since at least 2013 and long before that. And so, part of the changes were, was to hire a third-party code enforcement administrator who would do all hearings and appeals for code enforcement violations. So, that's pretty standard now to have a third-party neutral person do that. So, this contract was modeled after the county's agreement. And then, and so, basically, all it does is provide an ability for people, when they receive a code enforcement violation, to appeal that violation to a third-party to check and make sure that staff or the city in general isn't overstepping its bounds.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to be sure that we weren't tying our hands in this Lynette and that chief, everybody was happy with those number of days, and it just seems very short to me, but if everyone was happy, I'm happy.
Here comes chief. Do you have any questions for him? No, we're good?
If you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like, somebody like to make a motion to approve item number two?
I'll make motion to approve item two.
One second.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Passes three, zero. Next item is staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Woodall. This item is on page 38. The staff report is on page 38 of your packet. Obviously, the, you know, largest event that has occurred since our last council meeting was the public safety power shut-off issue that did pop up rather suddenly, relatively suddenly. As the council may recall, we did receive a presentation from PG&E not long before the shut-off, two or three meetings before the shut-off, where the council received an in-depth briefing on the threat of public safety power shut-offs. And the council discussed the need to do some level of outreach related to the power shut-off, and the mayor was able to work with the mayor of Eureka and bring out a public safety advisory, you know, message out on TV through Access Humboldt. So, and the YouTube video currently has over 13,000 views on it, so it was pretty well circulated for a local video. And I think that was actually quite, you know, predictive of the future. So, a lot of people, particularly around the release of that press release, that had been raining a little bit in the Humboldt County area, but in the video, we, you know, tried to remind, Mayor Garms and Mayor Seaman tried to remind folks that it didn't matter if you lived in Eureka or Rio Del, or Shelter Cove or Hoopah, that the PSPS events were a threat to everybody in the community. And that ended up being the case Wednesday of last week. So, overall, I think the city's response to the crisis was very good. The, particularly the public works staff deserves a lot of commendation. They took on the challenge, and in, I don't want to say a gleeful manner, but in a positive and determined manner, including encountering a number of problems, including a failed generator that I think had a circuit board fail on it about two or three hours into operating. So, again, these generators have typically not been operated for more than probably two or three hours at a time in a long time. So, that generator is currently under repair. We were able to immediately get a replacement generator from Went Construction, so they also deserve a lot of thanks for that. And so, basically, operations were totally uninterrupted for the most part. And even if we weren't able to secure that generator, you know, I think there would have been workarounds for it, but certainly would have made staff's job a lot more difficult. This has been a good learning experience for everybody. There were a lot of things that went right, and most everything went correctly. For example, here at City Hall, we still have a backup phone line hooked onto the copper system, so we still have some degree of telecommunications. We, a few years ago, had upgraded to a VoIP system, which only operates with electricity over the cable network. And so, we still had telephone communications. We were able to dial into the county's emergency operations center, which was activated, and be able to give them updates and for them to be able to update us here at City Hall. We didn't have lights, certainly, but the communication was key, and we were able to give an update later in the day on Wednesday on an OES phone call with all the other jurisdictions to kind of raise certain yellow flags. So, I think for Eureka, their big issue was the highway through Eureka and the stoplights. So, the batteries in the stoplights didn't operate for very long, and then Caltrans never put up stop signs in their intersections. So, if anybody had the unfortunate experience of driving through Eureka that day, it was a little bit scary, as people were certainly in a hurry. And for us, while I didn't raise any red flags, you know, I made sure that OES was aware of kind of our concern, that we've already kind of discussed with the council in the past, and that's really generators and fuel for generators. So, out of this experience, you know, we have a much better understanding of the longevity of our systems and how long the fuel storage will last. And so, it's really in the, more in the range of 48 hours, if everything's topped out and ready to go. And maybe that can be extended slightly by shuttling fuel, provided we have access to that or not. But there certainly are some recommendations that staff has been discussing and that we will be bringing back to the council. You know, we had previously discussed just the need for City Hall to have a backup generator system. That still remains needed, but we're also in discussions and trying to figure out what the best path forward is for the lift stations. So, again, we did have a generator failure, so we have two generators on the lift stations, and one of them did fail. They are older models that probably are due for replacement. I'm not sure that they meet modern code. They may, but they may also not meet modern emissions standards. So, one of the other options, and of course, fuel shuttling is really time-consuming, and basically, the other thing that was obvious is that during the power shut-off, everybody was scrambling for fuel, and most of the stations were down, and if they were up for any given time, they were soon out of fuel. So, we're lucky in the sense that the shut-off only lasted about, you know, 28 or 29 hours. If it had gone into day two, I think we would have been sweating a little bit more in terms of securing additional fuel, and I'm glad we didn't end up in that position. But certainly, a five-day power outage, it will be extremely difficult. Bear in mind that our wastewater facility, we're really trying to operate that to, you know, maintain compliance with, you know, federal regulations and state regulations. But it will be difficult to do that. It's not going to be in a massive crisis. It's, you know, there's a good likelihood that we may fail and have a overflow incident, which would be extremely unfortunate, but we've now understand a little bit more the limits of our system, and again, it's about 48 hours. So, and that would include water with another additional 48 to 72 hours in water supply up in the tanks. So, the water supply is a little bit in a better situation, but, so there are a number, you know, of options that we're looking at, including increasing fuel storage and looking at propane generators with propane tank backups and stuff like that. So, we'll be returning to the council with some recommendations here in the near future, and, you know, approaches to help kind of contain the cost, if there are any. But we want to try to get the city into position to do this again, if not by the end of, you know, the next couple of weeks, but certainly by the summer of 2020, so sometime in there, July or early August, having a finished product. So, that'll have to, you know, really kind of rise up in the priorities and probably will consume a good deal of time and financial resources.
When you talked about the generators, where was the new generator?
So, the new generator was on standby with Randy. I'm not sure that he used it, or he did?
Yes.
Okay, so he did use it. It worked so well that it was not, never an issue that came up to, you know, a crisis. So, but the other, the other, on the wastewater side, we did have a failure of the generators.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Is the propane a better option than the gasoline, if we went with propane?
Propane, so you can store propane for significantly longer amount of time. Both diesel and gas have limitations and require a degree of maintenance. And just regular, you know, petroleum is, would not be really a viable long-term storage solution. So, we've been asking around as to how other agencies are doing it, and it seems that propane is a good backup. You can get, apparently, you know, you can have it down more precisely as to how many hours the machine will operate, and it doesn't really require immediate refueling. So, if you had a tank that you could store, you know, 200 hours' worth of generator activity, that's pretty significant. So, and it would take a huge load off the Public Works Department to be shuttling around problem-solving generators, and they can focus in on the, on our main generator down at the facility that, you know, consumes about 250 gallons of fuel in a day, and that's with low flows and low water demand. So, and then, we'll also be looking at fuel storage. That will be significantly more expensive and more problematic, so we might look at grants as a way to fund that process and extend the timeline for that particular piece of equipment to operate.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager?
I just had, it's on a different topic. I mentioned it, I talked to you last week about, somebody came, what do you call it? A member of the community brought forth a petition last time?
Yeah.
And I wonder if you could give us in a future, don't have to do it tonight, but like in a future meeting, an update on what that was about and what the, any recommendations?
I'd also like to, are you done? Sorry. Are you done?
That's fine, okay.
I, this is just one incident that happened during the power outage, but somehow, we need to have neighborhood watches. An elderly lady lives on Pacific. I saw her in the grocery store two days after, and she was crying, and she had no idea, she does not have a cellphone, she does not have a computer, so she's not, you know, connected, did not know what was happening. Her husband has Alzheimer's, and they have no gas in their home. Everything's electrical. And I said, "Well, what did you do?" And she said, "Well, you just laid in bed and held each other because we were so cold." So, I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's a difficult one. We're really going to be reliant on neighbors looking out for neighbors and family members looking out for family members. I did go down to the senior housing facility, met with the manager, went and actually knocked on a couple of doors of people who hadn't been out and about that morning. But, you know, it's going to be very difficult for the city to, you know, be able to find these folks. So, it's really going to be contingent on everybody just being a good neighbor and knocking on their neighbors' doors and just making sure that, you know, that, looking out for the most vulnerable.
Maybe in the next newsletter or something, we could stress that, maybe.
Marilyn Ross put a new Facebook page up about what to do in case of emergencies so that we could all discuss, not complain about what was going on or anything like that.
Yeah, no.
But discuss the things that we found out that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And talk about it, and also knowing who our neighbors were.
Yes.
And who are the elderly neighbors or the handicap neighbors that you might want to, you know, watch out for, and I think it's going to be helpful.
Good.
Just a comment is that, along with what both council members are saying, that I'm talking to people out on the, in the wherever, this appears that this is going to be the new norm, would be a way to phrase this. And that's, we live, we do live in a fragile society, more than I think than most people realize. So, I think probably coming forward, I can see this being like easily the number one thing that has a priority when we do our, set our priorities for the year. And all of this stuff is involved in it, but how all of this gets addressed, somehow, the city needs to come together as a, as leadership of how to address the problems that have surfaced. And again, I'm pleased with how the city handled it all the way through. I think the city did a great job, staff and everyone involved getting us through it, but it's not going to go away, is my statement. And so, we got, we got off, I think, light, and if we don't have to have any more this year, great, but the longer ones are yet to come. And so, we need to plan, you know, how to extend all these things that have surfaced. And again, thank you for the, pass the word on to our city staff, that they did a great job.
Public Works. Eric, can you say?
I think I'll pretty much cover it, and like you were saying, we just have a couple of work coming that we need to address here in the near future, because we should have a little more local room, a lot more cushion for, you know, dealing with other things and, you know, these sort of earthquake country and, you know, plant power agenda. Things can escalate quickly, and we need to be as prepared as possible. This was a good learning period, and I'm, you know, thankful that they actually did turn it off to kind of expose our vulnerabilities. And moving forward, I think we've got to do a good plan and look forward to working with you guys to get them, I should allow you to rectify.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chief?
First, I want to apologize for being on late. We're searching, the search warrant's still going on as we speak. I would echo what everybody else is saying, it was a good learning experience. It was only about 24 hours, and it showed some of the things we need to work on, but it wasn't so long that it became a real hardship. I think the community handled it very well. We tended, for the most part, to stay at the station, both to conserve the gas and it be available since our phones weren't working. We were out a little bit, but not a lot, but there were, I don't think there were any calls for service at all. It was kind of the novelty of being without power. It was kind of interesting, a lot of people out walking around, people talking with their neighbors, which is, is a good thing. We did have some communication problems initially with Fortuna Dispatch at 3:00 in the morning when the power first went out. Those were resolved by the time we got back to work at 7:00, and hopefully, again, this is something they can work out in the future. Our communications worked fairly well from the point I had here at 7:00. We borrowed a small 2 KW generator from Public Works to recharge our radios that night. That seemed to work fine. So, it was a good experience. Now, if it gone on, first day it was kind of, two days, people are going to start getting upset. Three days, yeah, I'm not sure it's going to be, be quite as so placid as it was this time, this time, but we'll see. There was a concern about, I had an answer officer on duty that night. I had an officer on standby if necessary, but it wasn't, and we went through the night with only one officer on duty, and like I said, I don't think they had any calls for service.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on letter and council position related to Monument Road Agreement with County of Humboldt. City? Oh, thank you. Did the public have any questions of staff?
I got one, that's it. Nick Angelo, 1-56 Grayland Heights Road. I've been looking into a permanent generator at the house, and one of the options I'm starting to find out is that you can plum it into natural gas, which provides for constant feed. You don't have to worry about all this stuff running out of fuel, although it is served by PG&E as well, but, you know, generally, you retain your gas when you power shut-off, so.
Yeah, and I think the, I think the idea is to find a dual fuel, one that would operate off of natural gas and then have a propane backup, so.
Okay. Thank you. The next item was discussion and possible action on a letter and council position related to Monument Road Agreement with County of Humboldt. City manager?
Okay, so this one is just on page 41, and just quickly, I did meet with Supervisor Fennell and I, Public Works Director Tom Mattson from the county, and to discuss the letter. The letter had been sent to them, and we were able to meet in person up in Eureka. Overall, the reception to the letter was positive. We can expect that they will be agendizing some form of conversation on, on the letter for their next Board of Supervisors meeting, which is, I believe, on the 22nd. And so, there was, there was really only one point of contention on the letter where the director was adamant that it was a no-go and that staff would not support it. So, if you flip to page 43, at the bottom of the top paragraph, it states that the letter, our letter to the, to Supervisor Fennell states that the county would then be responsible for maintenance of the rehabilitated roadway into perpetuity would be the implication there. And so, so they're not opposed. Director Mattson was not opposed to the concept of rehabilitating the roadway and using funding derived from the, from the road, from the potential wind project, if it does move forward, for the rehabilitation of the road, but they were adamant that they, it was just a no-go for accepting maintenance into perpetuity. So, what staff is specifically asking for is just a consensus from the council that it's okay if staff waives, waives that and says that we can drop that from the letter. That was an addition from the council at the, from the prior meeting when we met to discuss the, to discuss the letter. Other than that, it was, overall, it was well-received, and I think their, their next step, one of the things that the county wants to do is just clarify exactly how much money they think they're going to be generating off of the project. think they're going to be generating off of the project, so, off of the potential wind project. So, it was pretty clear that there had been no, you know, analysis of those figures, and so they don't want to commit to, you know, potentially a $5 million project, and, you know, that there would be no revenue there. So, I think that that will be basically the direction from the Board of Supervisors to, you know, then have the item returned to the board at a later date with some more specific figures. So, we did urge them to agendize this as soon as possible, including today's Board of Supervisors meeting. That did not happen. It might have been because of the power outage, since we almost didn't even have an agenda item, or an agenda for the, for the meeting today, so I would understand that. But, but we are expecting some sort of agenda item and some sort of discussion from, at the board level on this, on the 22nd. So, I don't know if there are any questions from the council? Any questions?
I, I don't have a problem with taking that line out of the, the letter. What I, what I do see is that, in, in one way, we're kind of, we're arguing over money that we're over, arguing over something that doesn't exist yet.
Right.
And so, rather than a big argument about that, it's, it's good to address them. The other item, and this probably isn't for this particular meeting, but probably needs to be brought up at a later time, is how we address going forward Monument Road as a whole. And that's, you know, looking at this as a council item and then thinking about it, the county has a big concern to have this road addressed as, even as a separate issue. If they were, if we were to lose this through our city, the whole mountainside, and that includes particularly, the county has towers up there on Monument, HRCI assumes owns the Palco ones, but there's all kinds of cell towers and stuff and emergency services on the mountain and in the residence of the county, which seems to be more, more of a, more of a liability for the county than the city. And we get up to the end of our city, and then we're good. It's just, everybody else is left either driving, if it's open, driving all the way to Ferndale to get back around to the city. So, somewhere, I would like to see that the, the city works something with the county irregardless of TeraJam, and so that might have to be a, a later agendized item, but it, it is, should be a better concern.
That's true.
I feel comfortable about taking out that one stipulation.
So, I just want a clarification. So, you did, you've already given them this letter?
Yeah.
You gave this to Estelle?
I gave this to Estelle. I copied the other board members, and then Tom Matson has a, has a copy of it as well.
Okay. And, okay. So, I still, I'm still thinking that we should have asked for more than this. I still am thinking that we should have asked for a percentage of the, in what's coming in, since we're the one bearing the burdens of this, Riedel Scotia. And I still think, for over 30 years and as much money as they think that it's going to bring in, even though they haven't done their numbers, we still are bearing the brunt of it, and it seems to me that we should be getting 10%, some, some percentage of the income. And that's just my feeling.
I stated that I was okay with taking that line out.
Okay.
We, we're, we're still having them fix it. I just, we probably need to repair it, we probably need to maintain it ourselves.
Okay.
If it is ours. If it fails, then we, we go back to the thing we just did with the last failure. If there's a failure there, then you, you apply to whoever and you, the reality of budgets and, and priorities get set by what happens. You, you know, we've changed our budget priorities, we've seen it, they're talking about what they want to do on Last Chance Grade. Last Chance Grade falls in the ocean next week, and, and suddenly, the Northern California North is cut off, the priorities of somebody will change, and they'll take money from somewhere, and they'll address it. If you ask them to address it where it hasn't become an, an apparent problem, just like loose light. Loose light is a, is another catastrophe waiting to happen that is our responsibility, and we have a million dollars in reserve, but that million dollars is nothing if you have a catastrophe. And so, when those things arise, it doesn't hurt to make agencies aware that that's an issue, so they're not saying, gee, why wasn't I told? But it'll have to be addressed, or there won't be, the county will rise up.
Well, Sue, do you have any problem with us pulling that?
I said, I stated earlier, no idea.
Oh, no, no, Sue.
It's fine with me. I mean, like you said, if it falls in, but I, I'm wishing the letter wasn't, wasn't already given to them. I wasn't aware that this was not coming back to council prior, but I, I feel like we're not asking for enough, because the road has to be fixed, it has to be workable.
Well, so if there's a consensus, then we can pull the one thing, and we can look at it, and we'll definitely be able to look at it later.
Yeah.
Okay. On this next item, I'd like to carry this item over until the next meeting, when there's a full council.
That makes sense.
That's fine.
Okay. So, let's see.
Do we have to make a motion to table that, or?
Yeah, a motion would be, would probably be the...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it till next meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. 3-0, it passes. Okay. Council reports and communications.
Oh, I have nothing.
I just came from hazmat meeting. Our chief, Chris Mitchell, is doing a good job. He took over about a year ago. He's doing a good job. They were just, went over the hazardous waste materials in the county. Probably the biggest one they had was up at, he does Humboldt and Delnor, and they're, the hazmat team was asked to go up to Pelican Bay, the prison there. They had actual, the white powder in the mail. What's it called? And it was positive for...
Wow, man, that's...
Yeah. Yeah, so it was a big deal, and he was very positive in how all of the, they all worked together, all the different departments, and it was a good report. It's good to know that our, because it was federal, the FBI was there, I mean, everyone, there was a lot of people involved. So, he said it went very smoothly, and it's good to know that we have a great team out there.
Thank you. My only thing is that tomorrow at 3:00, we have a nuisance advisory meeting here at City Hall, and that's all I have. Do we do a motion for another term?
I think a motion would adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're out.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.